All right, welcome back. We are about to go into our final session of the evening. These are our candidates for city council through the city of Vandelia, of course. As with the other candidates, they have received a grouping of questions in advance, but we certainly would like to hear from you as well. So please provide any questions you may have. Again, you can fill out those index cards on the back table here, or if you'd like to ask those questions directly, you're welcome to do that as well. I'm going to encourage you to come up to the mic so that way we can pick it up because again, this is being videoed and will be shared with the community through the chamber's website as well as vandeliabutlernews.com. So with that being said, let me give a quick introduction of everyone, and then I will allow them the opportunity to share their introduction. So we have Mr. Bob Ayers, Ms. Constance R. Woods, Ms. Amber Avalatas Weaver. Am I close? I try. Brett Forrest Jackson and Corey M. Folick. So candidates, and we'll start. Mr. Ayers, go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank the chambers for hosting this event, and I'd like to also thank all the participants that came here tonight. A little bit about myself, I have a bachelor's degree from Bowling Green State University in accounting. I have a master's degree from the University of Dayton in business. I spent 35 years, my first 35 years, working at NCR, and primarily in accounting and finance. In my last 10, 12 years, I ran the service organization. Once when they decided to relocate to Atlanta, I opted to retire after 35 years. I spent some time, a year or two, recharging my battery, and then my wife spoiled everything and told me I had to go get another job. So I ended up taking a position with the St. Chris Church, the school, and the daycare center as the business director. And with that, I had all facilities responsibilities as well as all the finance. I lived in this community for 45 years. It's been a wonderful environment and community to raise my three daughters, Sarah, Jackie, and Carrie. And so I'm seeking reelection. I currently have been on city council, but I'm seeking reelection so I can pass on the great environment that we have to the next generation. Thank you.
Good evening. I would like to introduce myself. I don't want to talk about all the letters behind my name because that's boring and nobody wants to hear that, but I will tell you I like fly fishing and fast cars. I've lived in this neighborhood, in this community, for the last 35 years, and I've also run a business, a successful small business here with my brother who's my partner. I never seem to take the straight and narrow path toward any of my personal goals or business goals. I actually started out graduating from Otterbine University with a degree in art education. I soon realized, as I admire you educators immensely, I soon realized that the classroom was not the place for my skills, and decided that I needed to go back and convert that degree into an undergraduate accounting degree and then into a master's of business education. I mean, business degree. My political aspirations started in 1997. I was actually lobbying a case for the Ohio Society of CPAs with Senator Charles Horn and Representative Robert Corbin, and they were so impressed with my lobbying skills that they got the Governor Vornovich to appoint me to the Accountancy Board of Ohio, where I served a seven-year term working as for the state of Ohio and eventually chaired that. I was the second woman chair of that board. This, I actually interviewed for city council several years ago, well, more than several, when they had an open seat, and I sat there with a group of the council members in front of me, and Mayor Setser said, "Well, what have you done for your city, Connie?" And I said, and I didn't have a good answer for her. So immediately then I decided to proceed and join the Cultural Arts Committee and the Public Arts Committee and the Vandelia Development Corp. and the Board of Tax Appeals, and I've served as the chair of the Vandelia Butler Foundation and president and treasurer of Rotary and many other organizations in this community. So when Mayor Setser, a dear friend and client, asked me if I would consider our tax appointment this year, consider running for council, she said that someone needed to be on here who could say what they think and not be swayed by other people, and if any of you know me, you can attest to the fact that that is certainly my history. So I'm running for council.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Amber, and I am a wife and mother in the community. I'm an operations manager of my family's third-generation automotive business. I serve in the community on the Board of Zoning of Appeals, the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee, the Oktoberfest Steering Committee, the City of Vandelia's Fire Department Plan, or I'm sorry, Strategic Plan Steering Committee. I attended almost all of the meetings for the Planning and Zoning Code rewrite, even though I didn't sit on that committee. I did stay up on it and plan all of, or attend those meetings. I'm also a member of the Vandelia Butler Chamber of Commerce, and I volunteer in several different capacities in the community, recently with the Food Pantry and some other smaller organizations with mom groups. I am a member here at the Christian Life Center, and when I have thought about running, I thought that the board needed someone that was, that looked like me, that was involved in the community, that had stayed up on the issues, and just needed to have a voice of, a perspective of someone in my demographic, and just, just that voice. So that's about it.
I also just want to echo the thanks to Will and the chamber and to Christian Life Center for letting us use their facility and everybody else who's been involved in putting this event together, giving us an opportunity to speak to you and to answer some of these questions that I know would be important to the residents. I am Brett Forrest Jackson. I am first and foremost a husband and a father to a beautiful wife who's back there and three little children, a minivan dad, and it's not too bad. I'm also a small business owner. Several years ago, I moved my business here to Vandelia. I've got an independent financial planning firm that's in the airport corporate center. Vandelia is only a three-story building, right on the edge of town past all the car dealerships. It's growing, it's been successful, so I'm one of those Vandelia small business success stories. I do biblically responsible investing and going to be on the floor of the New York Stock Exchange this next Monday for the Ringing of the Bell with a company that I work with. So that's been exciting, and I am involved in the church where my family goes in leadership and in financial decision-making. I am excited about the future of Vandelia, and I am invested in Vandelia. I brought my family here, I brought my business here, and I want to see Vandelia continue to be a place where families want to live and grow and where businesses can thrive, where they can be nurtured by the city with a regulatory and financial environment that's beneficial. I think that's what we need for the future of our city. Oh, and I promised my four-year-old boy that sometime while I was up here, I would say, "Vote for daddy."
All right, good evening. I would also like to thank the chamber and the CLC for hosting us this evening. My name is Corey Folick. I was born and raised in Vandelia. I actually started working for the city in Parks and Recreation at the age of 14 and graduated from Butler High School in 1995. I attended Bowling Green State University where I majored in Recreation Administration, and I went there thinking I was going to return to Vandelia for my dream job in Parks and Recreation. I did come back, or I worked summers for the city at Castle Hill Swimming Pool and worked in pool management there. After I graduated from Bowling Green, I did in fact return to Vandelia and was hired as the city's first aquatic supervisor with the opening of the Vandelia Recreation Center. So I was involved in the planning and opening of that facility. I left the city in 2001 and went down to the city of Mason where I was hired to plan and oversee the construction of the Mason Community Recreation Center, which was a unique partnership between the city of Mason and the city of Mason School District for the high school and the community center, which was about a $100 million project. So I was there for a couple of years. In 2003, I accepted a career change and came to work for the city of Inglewood, where I've been working since 1995 part-time, but went into police work full-time, and I remain there today. I'm currently a police sergeant. I've worked in all capacities of the police department, as a police officer, a dispatcher, public relations, crime prevention. I was our first school resource officer where I worked with Northmont Schools for eight years. I completed a master's degree in public administration or city management from UD in 2005, and then for about the past 10 years, I've been involved with the city on a number of committees and boards, most recently the Planning and Zoning Rewrite Committee, the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee, and I've been on Planning Commission, and I'm the current chairperson for the Planning Commission. Thank you.
All right, thank you all very much for that information and introduction. So we are ready to move forward here with questions. Mr. Ayers, since we started with you there, we're going to take a step next door, and is it okay if I refer to you as Connie this evening?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Just making sure. So Connie, we will start the questions with you. Everyone will have a chance to answer these, and we'll go with that same first question we've started with each of the groups, which, for you Connie, what would you cut from or add to the current city budget and why?
Well, let me say that I printed out the worksheets for the budget for the current year, and it's got a stack of paper about that thick, and went through some of them, but without being privileged to information that was discussed in executive session or in council or having documentation to understand why these expenditures are there or what's behind them, I can't be presumptuous enough to say that I am going to change anything. I did call Bridgette, our finance director, and spoke with her about a couple items I had some questions on. She's, she shared with me that our revenues are up nine and a half percent this year, which is promising and good to hear. She was, as always, very accommodating. She, I feel she and her employees are doing an amazing job of administering our tax code. I work with them a lot through my practice. I can't say enough wonderful things about how they deal with things in a common sense kind of way and a reasonable way with our citizens. It hasn't always been this way. For the last 36 years, I've had a lot of fights. I've gone up against the city through the Board of Appeals for my personal self and my clients, so I've been on both sides of that, and I do appreciate all the hard work that's being done.
Thank you very much. Amber, the question comes to you. Would you like me to read the question again?
Um, no, I think I'd go ahead.
Go ahead when you're ready.
Well, I have attended the budget meetings for the last several years and plan to again the one in two weeks. The directors do an amazing job of presenting to us, or to, I was sitting in the meeting, so I will say us, but the council in general, their budget, and then council approves that budget. They only get a percentage of that to really work with, and then there's some money held back. So I think really the, the answer to that question is to just hold them accountable to what they present, more than cutting things or taking it away. It's more to just hold them accountable to what they present. One thing I would say that I think is important to our community when I was out talking is this big lifeguard issue, and they would like to see us fully fund our lifeguards a little bit better and paying them more so that we can retain them, so that we could keep our pools open. And that was just something that the community members had spoken to me about.
Great, thank you very much. Brett, same question to you. Should I read the question again? Go right ahead.
So I was thinking, as I was looking through the budget, similar to what Connie mentioned, that without having been involved in all of the deliberations behind the scenes or exactly what expenditures are part of each line item in the budget, that it would be presumptuous of me to say for sure from the outside looking in, this is what we need to cut. I'm not certain exactly what may be in each one of the line items, so I feel like I need more information before I can say that for sure. But as I was going through the budget, a few things stood out to me, and I would just say there are things that I want to inquire about, there are things that I want to learn more about, what's included in these various line items. I see from the city donations of $136,000, and I wonder what those donations are about. I would typically want donations to be done by private individuals, but I don't know. Printing and copies of almost $100,000, and I, a lot of that may be necessary, but I would want to look into that. In digital age, can we do more paperless? Several other or miscellaneous-type categories, other services that amount to pretty large amounts of the budget within the different departments, and I want to look into what exactly falls under other services that we're covering with those large amounts of money. So more just investigative, not a definitive answer.
Very good, thank you. Corey, same question. Should I read it?
No, thank you.
Okay.
So the city has a long history of strong services and I believe conservative spending and budgeting, and I don't feel there's a whole lot of fat that needs trimmed out of our current budget. One area that I would like to see some additional resources to is the area of economic and community development initiatives. The 2019 budget, we have just shy of $900,000 budgeted for those purposes. During the previous four years, the average was just over a half a million dollars, so this is less than 3% of our general fund. And as we've seen through the Comprehensive Planning Committee, or Steering Committee, we know that the focus that a lot of residents are worried about is the downtown area and some of our commercial areas. So I think we need to leverage more reasonable public funds to help re-encourage the redevelopment of those areas, distressed or vacant, commercial or residential areas, and focus on those areas that are coming to light in the Comprehensive Plan.
Thank you. Bob, the question to you.
Thank you, Will. Currently, our 2019 budget generates approximately about $20 million worth of revenue. $16 million of that comes from our income tax. Our expense budget is also approximately around $20 million. So for this past year, which is almost over, we will probably break even. Our financial goal for the city is to at least maintain our general fund balance of approximately 50% of our operating expenses. Currently, our general fund is about $14 million, and with, if you reach that goal, it would be about $10 million, so we're well within our financial goal. We do a very good job at scrutinizing every line item in our budget. The way the whole thing works is in August of each year, each one of the financial directors or each one of the directors of the department develops a budget. In September, they review it with our city manager, and then in October, as a matter of fact, the meeting is scheduled October 28th and 29th, we go through for two days the entire budget line item by line item, and I will say this is open to the public, so anyone is more than welcome to sit in on those meetings. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. So we're going to get into this kind of a two-part question here, a little more in-depth, so I'm going to read the introduction, and then we'll go into the questions that are associated with the introduction. And we had the same conversation with the township trustee candidates, so it's coming back here. It may be even a little more relevant within the city as far as the feelings and emotions that are attached to this. So the question, the land that is owned by the city of Dayton, it has, it's seen large growth, and with that large growth, there's also this emotional strain that has been put on the citizens of Vandelia. So with those growing concerns in mind over this expansion, Amber, the question comes to you first. What is your opinion concerning that commercial growth up and around the airport specifically, and how do you feel the city is currently handling that situation?
Well, as a decision-maker, you have to listen to people's concerns, but you have to take the emotion out of it. That is an important piece when you are sitting down and weighing things out. I am very concerned about all of this that is coming in on us for Dayton, and if you would have sat in on the meeting last night, you know that this is just going to continue to grow. The way that the city and the township has been handling it, I think it was a slow move, and we could have done things a little bit sooner. I am concerned, as I brought up last night, that we have not contacted the GPS systems and let the trucking traffic, or the truckers know that that is not a way that they can turn yet, and I think that we just, we could have done things a little bit sooner and maybe a little more proactively.
Great, thank you very much. Brett, that same question to you, and should I read the question again? Go right ahead.
Yeah, so I also appreciated being able to be at the informational meeting that was held in the Vandelia City Council last night. City manager and the, and the current council members presented a lot of information, and there's much more beneath the surface and much more deliberating that's gone on in those chambers over the last several years to explore various ways to deal with unwanted development, these warehouses and distribution facilities, development that's unwanted by Vandelia residents. And whether it's because they don't want to have a building like that near their residential area, or they don't want trucks passing through our main roads for one reason or another, it's highly undesirable to the people in the community, and I think it's important that people in the community understand that council members feel the same way and are trying to take measures that they can to deal with those issues. And unfortunately, we're just, we're very limited as to what we can do. One option was brought up last night that I think may be more effective than others, and that would be getting the state to designate State Route 40 as not a truck route, that they would set up, that there needs to be an alternate truck route. So that would be a matter for us to contact our representatives about. Here would be Phil Plummer.
Thank you very much. Corey, same question.
So yes, my opinion, like I think pretty much everyone's opinion, is they don't, I don't know anyone that likes the development that's going on at the airport, but the reality is, is the airport is in the city of Dayton corporate limits, it's owned by the city of Dayton, and it's controlled 100% by the city of Dayton and the Dayton City Commission and/or the city of Union if you go further west out to the development west of the airport. I think the city has done its due diligence and tried to mitigate the impacts on the city and the residents. I know they've been working on it for more than a year, so it's not like they just all of a sudden decided that this is something that needed to be dealt with last night, but their hands are tied for dealing with the commercial truck traffic through town. We've got, they've taken some steps, I think they've shown some improvement, but there's only so much the city can do. We can't mitigate traffic restrictions on US 40 because it's a US route. We've attempted to restrict it where we could at Dixie. We're looking at calming, traffic calming efforts through town, through the installation of a possible roundabout or medians to try to change traffic flow or to calm it. And I think the city, you know, right now with the land deal with the city of Dayton and the sewer agreement, we're trying to leverage what little control we have to try to make the impact as minimal to Vandia residents as possible, but largely Vandia City Council has very little control over what's happening at the airport.
Bob, question to you.
Thank you. I don't think there's much more that I can say about this that hasn't currently been said. I would like to thank the, these four individuals for showing up at our open forum last night. We had a very good meeting, open to the public, to discuss specifically this issue, the development out at the airport and the truck traffic through our town. We met for about two hours, came up with some good ideas, and we will pursue those ideas. I think it's important to understand, there is no home run here. If we could do one thing that would stop all of this, we certainly would pursue that, but that's not in the cards. There are a bunch of little things that we can do that collectively will help our cause here in reducing traffic. We have trained five policemen on commercial vehicles. You can see that they're stopping some as they come through, our consultants, we've met with Phil Plummer, and everything that these people have talked about, we are currently have done or pursuing. And I think you realize that the truck traffic has slowed down in the city of Vandia, but with the population that's going to continue out at the airport, it's just going to get worse, and we need to stay in front of it. Thank you.
Thank you, and then Connie, that same question to you.
Again, it's all been said, but, and council's working very hard to come up with some solutions to mitigate the adversities of all the transportation traffic. City of Vandelia holds all the cards in this game, and I do feel that legislation and working through Phil Plummer and Peggy Leener to get this accomplished is probably the best solution, just from the information that I have. I know that by lobbying and working with them in the past and legislators, that well-thought-out letters and phone calls and concerns are accepted by them, welcomed by them, and I would encourage any of you who are concerned with this to let them know that this is a consideration, and not just hear it from council, but hear it from the people who live here, because it's important to them. You vote for them, and they do listen, and they welcome that, so, feedback, so.
Great, thank you very much. And this may be beating the dead horse at this point, but we're going to go ahead and move on with the second part of that question, and this, Brett, we'll start with you, sir, and the second part of this question being, so what, again, concerning this development, what is your opinion concerning the infrastructure changes that are needed to handle these facilities, and how should, or who should be responsible for them?
Infrastructure changes that are related to this particular issue are primarily roads. It's roads and intersections and traffic signals and those sorts of things, and obviously we're responsible for our roads. City of Vandelia has to repair and maintain our roads. We want to maintain our roads in a way that's as nice as possible for our residents, and we can't control whether semi-trucks drive across them or not, but we do, I think, have a recent example of some really successful road construction projects that have gone on recently right in the city, all along State Route 40 and up on Northwoods Boulevard, and some of that was done with Edge grants from the state. So we were able to get some financial assistance that came in for us to redo some of those roads. I think as much as we can leverage options like that is good to reduce the burden on our city.
Corey, then that same question, should I repeat that, or are you okay?
No, thanks.
All right, go right ahead.
So again, in the perfect world, I think we would love for Dayton and Union to pay for the infrastructure through Vandia, but that's not a reality, and it's our responsibility to do that. I think it's important that the city does continue to do what we can to discourage and manage the commercial truck traffic through town, especially through the heart of the downtown area, but also our neighborhoods. I mean, we've heard that truck traffic is going through our residential neighborhoods to try to circumvent some of the control mechanisms the city have put in place, and that is something we have more control of. So I think through additional signage and enforcement, we can try to discourage and deal with the consequences of commercial truck traffic through our neighborhoods, because those roads definitely are not designed for that type of traffic. As Brett alluded to, we do have, you know, we've had some success with leveraging outside cost sharing and funding through the Ohio Department of Transportation, the Public Works Commission, and also the Montgomery County Transportation District, so that at least when we are in the position of having to do these infrastructure improvements, we can hopefully leverage some additional funding and burden, or reduce the burden that we have locally and at least share that cost or let them pay more than we need to.
Bob, the question to you.
I think currently on the books, if you will, there is a plan to widen US 40 around the airport access, so we hope that that will come to pass. And also, I think as the warehouses continue to populate the Dayton Airport, I think we, city council can ask for traffic studies by the city of Dayton, and as that population of truck traffic continues to grow, then we would require traffic studies, and if it's overpopulating all of these it's overpopulating all of these roads, we would demand that that infrastructure be put in place as these warehouses are being put up. Thank you.
Thank you. Connie?
Yes, I recalled a presentation that was given to our Rotary Club several years ago after RB Jurgens completed the road in front of P&amp;G, I think they call it Air Cargo Road, and they discussed how they had gone down much deeper than a normal roadway, and how the surfacing that they had done was meant to last and to be able to take the brunt of all those trucks driving over that road, which it's held up pretty well under those conditions. So I contacted Vic today, the project manager out there, and talked to him and discussed the cost of that, and he explained that, yeah, those roads are great, and they're three times the cost of a normal roadway. So he also shared with me that there are funding opportunities with Montgomery County Transportation Improvement District, the Ohio Development Council, state of Ohio through ODOT, and he also said that he was pretty confident that this project, the widening project that Bob just referred to, is shared 50/50 with the $8 million national road resurfacing through the track transportation funding arm. And he did share with me that the Northwoods project, the Lightner Road project, this project on this road are all being, using that kind of technology when it comes to the road surfacing in depth to try to keep them strong. But he also said that he's still trying to work to the city about the 20-plus orange barrels that were demolished and annihilated by the trucks on Northwoods. He said it's a much bigger incident than they've ever had in a road project before, but he pretty much has let that go.
All right, thank you, Connie. And then Amber, I think you get to finish us up on this one. So what are your thoughts?
Well, I think they all covered where funding can come from, but the question was, who would be responsible for them? The one road that I think we should not be responsible for, and I know council has fought this, is the Dayton Airport Access Road, and we are responsible for that. They have fought that, and I think that with all of the traffic, as we are continuing to try and encourage the truck traffic to go to that road, I still don't think we should be responsible for that road. So that's the only thing I wanted to add to what everyone else has said.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate that. Moving down our list of questions here, and I believe Cory, this will start with you. The dynamic of residents through Van Dalia is starting to change, we're seeing a change of that dynamic. And in your opinion, this change, is it good for the community? And how do you see this dynamic affecting Van Dalia moving forward from now through 10-year period?
Okay. So yes, Van Dalia's population is changing, and in fact, it's decreasing. We've had a decrease in population since the last census. Almost 20% of our population is over the age of 65, and another quarter percent is under the age of 18. And approximately 59% of our homes are owner-occupied homes in the city. So, you know, we do have a changing population than what it was 15, 20, 30 years ago. Our residential growth has been fairly stagnant in the past. We've had an average of just 4.6 new housing starts in the past five years, and just five so far this year. So residential growth is not occurring in Van Dalia right now. Our aging housing stock in neighborhoods tend to trend more towards rental properties, and I think through effective zoning code enforcement, community development initiatives, we should realize an increase in our property values and encourage further development in the future. And I just think that we need to focus, and again, this is coming out of the comprehensive plan that we were working on, you know, we need to look at housing options for our aging population, but also our young professionals. And I am pretty excited that here just recently, we had a developer come forward to the city to prepare or to propose a new housing development to orient themselves towards the older population and empty nesters. So I think that's an exciting opportunity for the city, in a bunch of land that has been very difficult to develop over the past 10 years or so.
Great, thank you very much. Bob?
For the city of Van Dalia, the population is approximately 15,000, and I don't think that's swayed more than probably a couple hundred people one way or the other for the last 10, 15 years. In 2017, the median age of our population is 43.8 years. In 2009, eight or nine years before that, the median age of our population was 39.6. So what that tells you is that the age of the citizens of Van Dalia is getting older and not being supplemented by younger people moving into the city. So as Cory mentioned, that tells me we have to do two things. We have to provide for the senior-type citizens, and we have an opportunity with Redwood LLC coming in presenting to us, that all needs to be worked out, but I very much support that project. And then for the younger generation to attract them, we need to, I don't think there's a city around of our size that has the amenities that we have. We have a sports complex, we have a rec center, we have a swimming pool, we have a golf course, we have a senior citizen center, and we have wonderful parks. So we need to keep those maintained, we need to continue with that, with those efforts to attract the younger generation, and I think in the end it will all work out. Thank you.
Bob, thank you for that. Connie, question to you.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll reiterate that the growth has been rather stagnant over the last 10 years, at least. Our unemployment rate is 4.4%, and the national average is 3.5. Our annual salaries are right around $52,000, and the communities like TIP and Butler Township and Inglewood are the mid-to-high 60s. So we're behind there in income as well. There are some negatives that were listed on the Google website about our city, and it's the recent unemployment, the lack of entertainment facilities, lack of art and culture, and residential communities appear more industrial than having roads that are curving and trees and parks and things that make life beautiful. I tend to disagree with that assumption from the website, but I do think that we need to increase desirability to get younger people and people of all ages moving in here. We can look to doing things, and not just with city funding, but look to charitable funding, like with the venue that Rotary just built with RB Jurgens in the city over at our art park for entertainment facilities. We put a sculpture in the rec center from Rotary, we donated that, the bird sculpture. We, I personally donated a limestone sculpture bench over at the art park, that was an opportunity that people can do. So, I mean, it's not just about looking to the city for funding all these things, it's about the community and coming forth and the businesses as well.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that. Amber, same question to you, do I need to repeat it at this point, are we okay?
Yeah.
All right, super.
So yeah, our age group is kind of spreading, I guess you could say, and that there's a younger group and there's an older group, but our median age is 43. And I think that we need to find things that are attractive to them. For our older age group, I just recently talked to my neighbor, he moved in in the 70s, he was one of the first people to buy into our housing development, and he said, "I want to stay in Van Dalia, but I don't know where to go next." And so I was excited to share with him, actually walked over the plan that was being discussed in council for the 55 and up residential area, excuse me, off of Webster. So I think that we have some plans in place, and we do have some nice amenities. It's also about letting them know about them, because I can't tell you how many people that I've talked to that don't even know about our art park, or don't know about the things that we have. So creating a space for them that is more walkable, bicycle-friendly, and just an area that attracts them would be really good for our community.
Thank you very much. Brent, I think you get to answer this question for us and share your thoughts.
All right. Probably not a lot that hasn't already been said. I think the biggest way that the population is changing is, as always, we're all aging, and so the population is getting older. And I think that the question is similar to a question that we've asked among the leadership at the church where I go, and that is, what can you do to attract young people, young families, to come into our community and put down roots while continuing to serve the older people who have been the backbone of the community for decades? And so many of these things that have already been mentioned, I think are incredible assets to the city of Van Dalia, all of the things that we have to offer. I think just vibrant community and attractive new development would have the capacity to draw those young families and potential transplants that would want to make Van Dalia their home. Our older, stable neighborhoods are awesome, and mixed-use development, like what's going on with the Redwood properties, those are all going to contribute to the success in the future.
Great, thank you very much. We do have a few more questions that were in that packet. We are going to forego those questions, because I do have a few here that were handed to me, so I'd like to read these questions from individuals in the audience today. I'm going to read this one, although it wasn't handed to me now, but based off of previous questions that have been asked of each of the other groups, I'm guessing it's relevant here as well, so we'll go ahead and start this, and this can be answered by everyone if you choose, it's completely up to you. But this question being concerning benefits within the position, so what are the benefits that are associated with council, as far as what you would get, and so specifically, an annual salary, if you have that information, as well as are you eligible for healthcare, and then would you enroll in that healthcare plan? So Bob, we'll start that with you.
Yes, as Richard mentioned, I think our annual salary is $5,200 a year. All council members are entitled to healthcare, I do take healthcare, my wife and I. And I think one other thing that has been mentioned, I think we are given one free membership to either the golf course, the senior citizen center, the rec center, or the swimming pool. So that's a benefit that each one of the council affords. Thank you.
Connie, if you'd like to add to that?
Well, I don't know, really, because I'm not on council, and the salary is not an issue or not even the reason that I'm here. As far as the healthcare goes, I, last year, started on Medicare, tomorrow's my birthday, and I'm 66, so I have no need for that, I am covered under that beautiful government plaque.
Well, we should say happy birthday, so thank you for your thoughts, appreciate that. And maybe it's more relevant for Amber, Brent, and Cory specifically, on that healthcare question, you know, we, it's out there, are you intending to enroll into that program if you're elected? So Amber?
I do not plan to take part in the healthcare.
Simple enough. Brent?
Simple answer from me, too, I don't know. All I knew, or I thought that there was salary along the lines of $5,000. Again, not the reason why I was seeking the position, and I didn't know anything about health insurance being an option, so something that I guess my wife and I would have to investigate.
Okay, very good. Cory, same question.
I knew there was a salary, it was discussed in the council meeting last week, so that's when I learned when it was $5,200 a year, but I will not accept healthcare benefits through the city of Van Dalia.
Okay, great, thank you, I appreciate you asking, or answering, excuse me, that question. More questions here that were introduced, so I'll read these off. And Connie, you'll get to answer first, and then everyone else can answer as well, if you feel inclined to do so. So after speaking with folks in the community and working with different committees, what is the most significant issue that you have identified, and how do you feel it can be dealt with? So again, so as you've been out speaking with individuals within the community, you've probably unearthed some different ideas and thoughts, significant issues for those individuals. So have you had a chance to identify those issues, and how will you be able to work through those?
Okay, and I have been out walking door to door, and I was bringing all the doorbells in the beginning until I ran out of time, but I still get a lot of solicited and unsolicited opinions, and I welcome them. And they range anywhere from, "We want a women's restroom on the fourth tee of the golf course," or "We want," you know, I mean, it's like all kinds of personal things that are important to people, and I understand that, and I'm listening and making notes and taking, I mean, and then, of course, I talked to the gentleman on the golf committee, and he says, "Yeah, but that's going to cost $500,000 to do that, because we have to deal with the parks," and it's like, so, you know, I don't have a lot of information on knowing what the resolution is. But the thing I'm hearing most is that stagn, that they feel Van Dalia is stagnant, and that's just a word I've heard over and over again. I don't know if it is or isn't, but I do think that we maybe could do some things to entice some growth and just give a better quality of life, maybe, to the residents, and have them feel like, instead of all this industrial and distribution, there might be some retail and some restaurants and some entertainment and some service businesses that we could entice to the city.
Very good, thank you. Amber, that same question?
What I hear is we have lost some of our hometown feel when we lost some of those small-town businesses. When Ken's closed, when the Rib House closed, when Fulmer's closed, when all of those businesses that kind of gave us that identity, people got really sad, because that's what they loved about our community. And so they would really like to see some of those things come back. And I don't know how to, you can't recreate those things, you really just can't. Those were things that people just loved. So, but to try and find something like that, to come here and some people, maybe some people in the community to step up and start a business would be really great, because I feel like that is something that's lost, and I just hear that over and over again.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Brent, same question?
Yep. Yeah, similar thoughts here, as I'm talking to people in the community, I hear a recurring theme, and that is that they'd love to see downtown or a community that has more of a hometown feel, more local businesses. Richard was even mentioning this earlier, he said that he's been hearing this the entire time he's been living in Van Dalia, that people would love to see a certain kind of development in downtown and around the city, places to go and places to be. A great success story in town has been a place like Warehouse 4. They, you know, provide an awesome gathering place for people who are part of the community to just hang out, and it's a hometown local place. What can we do to incentivize more like that to come out of the community? So an idea like what Richard was proposing, a community reinvestment plan of some sort, to try to spur those kinds of initiatives, maybe a city-sponsored entrepreneurship incubator, something along those lines that could help some of those businesses that are desired by the people in the community to spring up more easily.
Great, thank you. Cory, again, the same question.
Okay, and not to beat the dead horse, but the thing you hear over and over, of course, is the truck traffic and the downtown revitalization needs. And I think, like I mentioned before, the comprehensive plan is addressing some of that, and so one of my priorities would be, you know, when that plan is adopted, that we're not just putting it on a shelf and letting it collect dust. I think the city needs to invest money behind getting the comprehensive plan implemented, or at least parts of it. The entire plan may not be what needs to be implemented, but we can start taking small steps towards making those improvements. But the other thing, I really think, you know, our community, especially a lot of our older neighborhoods, we've got neighborhoods that are 60, 70 years old, and we've got an aging infrastructure in Van Dalia. And we've got, the city is experiencing double-digit water main breaks every year, and I think that needs to be a priority for Van Dalia, is investing money into our capital, more money into our capital improvements, and starting to really address these ongoing infrastructure issues that we're having throughout the town, throughout the city.
Bob, same question?
Yeah, I think Cory hits the nail on the head. With the budget reviews coming up, I think we will have a watchful eye on the amount of money that we're spending for our infrastructure. So you see these, our public works departments out there digging holes and working on water main line breaks and things of that nature. So we do have a very aging infrastructure, and we need to spend some more money, so we'll probably look at that and plow as much money into the next year's budget as we can financially afford. The other thing is, I mean, a little more remote, but, you know, on our fire department, that's important to all of our citizens, we currently have a part-time staffing model. A lot of the cities have moved to a more balanced staffing model because of the turnover that we get from part-time paramedics, so I think that needs to be addressed, and along with trying to address our downtown. And... and as we talked about with all of the people up here. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We're starting to run a little tight on time, so I still want to get these last two questions in. So Amber, we're going to come to you with this next one. And again, everyone has the opportunity to answer these if you choose to do so. So the question posed here, Amber, is what kinds of conflicts of interest should we be aware of? Even as Ms. Woods had mentioned, advocating for clients before being on council or before the council or even the mayor-elect with real estate. So conflicts of interest, are we aware of any? What can we share? I'll try and read that again. Says, "What kinds of conflicts of interest should we be aware of?" Okay? And then there are specific references that Ms. Woods mentioned advocating for a client and then mayor-elect with real estate purchases. So the question is concerning conflicts of interest.
If it's directed at me, I'll answer.
It doesn't say specifically you, but it does mention you, so.
Well, as far as going to the Board of Tax Appeals, I haven't really been there in probably 10 years because I haven't, we've got such an amazing tax department, I don't have to go. I have to just call them and say, "Hey, let's talk about this," and we get it resolved in a meanable way. But if I have to go and represent a client, because I believe that the tax department is looking at a law or regulation and doing it in an, maybe just inappropriate manner, that's my job as my client's CPA to go represent them. I would not serve on the appeals board, obviously. If I were going before appeals, I would recuse myself and not be there and not be part of that decision. You know, anytime, the same thing. I lobby for the Ohio Society on the municipal tax bill and if I, which is at odds at times with the city, and I would have to recuse myself and stay away from that discussion or stop lobbying for the Ohio Society, but I can't serve two masters.
Very good. Sure, go right ahead.
As a financial advisor, one of the things that regulatory agencies are continually looking at is potential conflicts of interest between the advisor and their client. So I'm hearing this concept of conflict of interest all the time. And even as regulatory bodies try to pass legislation or rules that mitigate conflicts of interest, you start to realize that there's actually no way to completely eliminate potential conflicts of interest. And so I think the most important thing is that there's transparency. I think just anybody who would be serving on the council or in any position with the city is just transparent about, hey, this is my line of work, this is my business, this is also how I'm serving the city, and let the people decide. You know, do they feel like there's anything that's inappropriate going on? Obviously, if it seems like it's going to be an apparent problem, anyone can recuse themselves just to be completely above reproach.
Thank you very much. Additional comments? Sure, Corey, go ahead.
I have a quick response. I would think, you know, I know they addressed the issue with the mayor of working in real estate and Connie, and I would expect that anyone on city council and especially the city's law director would give advice if there needed to be a recusal from any decision that was made at the city council level. But the other thing too, and it's because it's been brought up while I've been out talking with people, is I've been asked about a potential conflict of interest as a result of my oldest brother being the fire chief for the city of Vandelia. And, you know, as I've explained to people, you know, it's simple that it's a council manager, former government. The city manager and the city attorney are the only two employees that council employees directly. They're the only employees that council votes on contracts for, disciplines, promotes, evaluates. Every other city employee in the city serves at the pleasure of the city manager and it's his or her decision and their decision alone whether that person is employed, promoted, granted evaluations, pay raises, and everything else, discipline. So I don't feel there's any conflict of interest in that situation. I would think that, you know, I've spoken with a lot of the existing council members and they don't see a conflict of interest in that either because council is not involved in the supervision of employees other than the city manager and the city attorney.
Great, thank you. Amber or Bob, any additional comments there?
No, I don't have a problem with any one of these candidates or the mayor-elect with conflicts of interest.
Okay, great. So our last question here, this is for everyone, at least that's what it says on the card. We'll see how it goes. So the question is, "What should the city do to encourage existing building owners in the downtown area to update their aging storefront facades?" Interesting. We can start, Amber or anyone, with that question. Everybody has the opportunity to answer.
I think we can't force anybody to do something, you know, no matter how much we want them to, no matter how much we may want to see things updated in the downtown area, we don't have the capacity to force that. So I think the best option is just to try to think of ways to incentivize those business owners, something like a tax abatement in exchange for the kind of updates that we want, like what mayor, future mayor, Richard Herbst was mentioning earlier, some things along those lines. Incentives though, I think all options should be on the table.
Great. Corey, I see you grabbed the mic. Go ahead.
Well, the only thing I would add to that is I think there is some opportunity for the city through the zoning code and they have done it. I mean, as businesses on National Road have redeveloped over the years, you know, they are brought into compliance with current zoning regulations. We've seen it in a number of businesses through the downtown area, Taco Bell, Pizza Hut, My Favorite Pet, now Banfield. But those businesses are brought up to code, but it's not something that you can force upon everybody at one time. We have to take advantage of the opportunity when it rises. And I think through the recent updates in the planning and zoning code, we've even made that code more user-friendly. So moving forward, it should be an easier option for businesses that want to redevelop around Vandelia.
Amber, go ahead, sure.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, I know that I get that question a lot, but we have to be very careful when you're approaching on anybody's property rights because if you're going to be a stickler for one, that doesn't just go for that one person, it will go for everyone. So I do agree with the proposition that Richard had mentioned. I think that's a great idea that he had talked about incentivizing people, but I don't think that it's a good idea to force anyone to do anything unless it is within our zoning code already. I think that we do, we just have to be careful about trying to force anyone because if you force one person, just be careful when it's your own home or your own place to try and have someone force it on you. It doesn't always feel very well.
Connie?
I just have, one thing, I've heard that the ordinances in the city are probably a little too general at the present time and that they need to have more clarity. And they say that they get enforced with ambiguity and sometimes inconsistency because of their fact that they are so general. So that's just from out talking to the citizens and hearing that, that maybe we could take a look at maybe reining those in a little bit. The other thing is, TIP City, I know, has a downtown improvement fund through their foundation, which is also funded by private individuals, so that's something we could look at as well.
Bob, any thoughts?
Yeah, I think it's a difficult thing to address, but it certainly needs to be addressed. I mean, years ago, they changed, the council changed the code on the large upright signs to monumental signs and it's been very difficult to enforce, but as businesses remodel, I think that's the opportunity you need to really stress to them a nicer front. The monumental signs, we've been very diligent on enforcing that. So, and it's not something you can do overnight. Working with the community, working with the owners of these businesses and over time, little by little, you can get some things accomplished.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much. All right, again, oh, we have a question in the back room. Rodney, can you come up and ask that question so we can hear it over the microphone? I'm going to give you this mic.
I don't have necessarily a question, more of a statement. Whoever wins, I just hope you guys take the opportunity to build a relationship with our administration, with the superintendent and treasurer of the schools. I think that relationship is huge. So if you are elected, I hope you take that opportunity to meet with them and build that relationship. I know a lot of things have been mentioned about these growing truck stops and everything else with the city of Dayton, but there is one benefit out of it. A lot of people don't understand this, but there is one benefit, is that the school system does receive money for this. I know there was a big thing, we'll say specifically about the prayer. With GMM there, we were going to receive up to approximately $2 million a year from that company and we lost that. Now, I understand there's a lot of negatives involved with it too, but there is opportunities for our schools and for our kids to receive that money, which will take a lot of the financial burden off our community too. So just keep that in mind as, if you're elected, to build those relationships with the administration and the treasurer, the superintendent, so we can work through these things and people in the community can be more educated on what's going on.
I think that's an excellent point because when I talked in my opening dialogue about the wonderful community we have and the opportunity my wife and I have to raise our through children here, when I speak of community, it's just not the city of Vandelia, it's the school system and it's Butler Township. We're all here together. It's all one community. So it behooves us all to work together for the common good. Thank you.
Any other thoughts? No? Okay. I have another question. Come on up, Cindy, come on up. Oh, I'll stand with you.
I just have a comment. So when you were talking about the small-town feel and getting that back, I'm from Huber Heights, and looking at the corridor that you do have on National Road there, you have an excellent opportunity that has been built through the ages of accessible businesses that you can get out and walk, go in this one, go in that one, and enjoy it. You are small-town and that's good because we lose that. As far as your aging community goes, we're all aging. We're losing a lot of workforce, we're losing a lot of our young people. Kind of build on those seniors, help them out. That's what I'm asking of you, but thank the generation before you. These council people, the mayor, she's done an excellent job. Thank you. Sometimes it's a thankless job, but they've got you to where you are today. Stay friends, no matter who wins. That's all I want to say.
Any comments back? No? All right. Any other questions that anyone would like to share this evening? No? Well, then in closing, let me say this. First of all, again, thank you all for coming out and being part of our Meet the Candidate Evening. I hope that you were able to obtain the information you were looking for. I again want to commend all of, not only our city council candidates, but our township trustee candidates, our school candidates, as well as our mayor-elect and our fiscal officer-elect. Those individuals stepping up to work in these positions, you know, they are individuals just like you and I. They're not any different, but they're willing to put themselves out there for the betterment of the entire community. So they should all be commended for that opportunity, even if they don't get elected. The fact that you stepped up and made yourself available, it's a wonderful thing. So I want to say again, thank you to the Christian Life Center. This is a great facility. We appreciate them providing us the opportunity to be here. I want to thank Ms. Jen Tyne for helping us try to stay on schedule as best we could. Back in the room, Mr. Justin Spibby with J Spibby Photography for videoing the event. Mr. Daryl Whacker with Vandelia Butler News and VandeliaButlerNews.com. And then if, again, if you haven't subscribed to that new publication, please consider that. And at this point, let's give a round of applause to a candidate that's here for city council. And I invite you all to stick around for the reception afterwards.